If I can have everyone's attention, we're gonna get ready to start. So, this is the San Antonio's public meeting on the Brackenridge draft master plan. And so, I'm gonna ask for an announcement to be made. El abusos para las personas que requieran interpretación en español. Si hay alguien aquí que levante la mano y le pregunte, pues es todo. Okay, gracias. Thank you, good evening. My name is Xavier Ruhutia. I'm the director of the City of San Antonio Parks and Recreation Department. And just to make sure everyone's in the right place, this is the public meeting on the draft Brackenridge Park master plan. Just a little bit of background. First of all, I want to thank the Guadalupe for hosting us here. This is one of six additional meetings that we're having on the draft master plan. Back last year, in 20...actually, in 2015, city council approved funding for a master plan for Brackenridge Park. So, the city went through the procurement process and we granted...awarded a group of consultants that job of coming up with a master plan for Brackenridge Park. And before we get into a lot of details about that, we'll kind of give you some background and some history about it. But just like I mentioned, so that plan, they've been working on it over the last, a little bit less, probably less than a year, and talking to a lot of different groups, a lot of stakeholders, neighborhoods. But as part of that process in reviewing the draft master plan, we've got some additional feedback. And I want to recognize former councilwoman Greta Solvades here, who also brought to the attention of Councilman Tramino that really there needed to be a larger, more engaged public input process. That really was really citywide. So, we appreciate that feedback and we took that challenge. And so, we added six meetings across the city as a whole. And this is actually the third meeting of those six that were holding at different venues across the city. So, we will be going through, again, like I mentioned, we'll kind of give you a background. And then, we're gonna give opportunity for people to speak who wish to speak. But everyone has the opportunity to weigh in on how they feel about the different elements. And we'll get into some detail about that. But before I go any further, I really wanted to... We are in District 5 and we're being hosted by Guadalupe. But also, Councilwoman Gonzalez is here. And Councilman Tramino really engaged his other colleagues to say, "Hey, this is important. You know, Brackenridge Park is not just District 1. It's not just District 2. It's really a citywide park." And it really is one of the parks that people think of when they think of parks in San Antonio. So, he really worked with his other colleagues to get them to really be engaged as well and get the community out. So, we're really excited that there's a number of people that are here today. And I want to give Councilwoman Gonzalez an opportunity to say a few words and thank for being here.
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the historic Guadalupe Theater. So, if you all have not been here in a long time, welcome back to the theater or welcome back to the Guadalupe. We are, of course, proud of this beautiful theater that hosts us so very often, especially for public events and forums like this one. And I also want to thank Councilwoman for bringing this to our attention and allowing us the opportunity to weigh in on this very important part of Brackenridge. I have two very small children, a two-and-a-half-year-old son and a one-year-old son. And we take advantage of our parks very often. And so, I go to Brackenridge Park fairly often, probably a couple of times a month. And I take advantage of every...of the different amenities from the park. And lately, I've been parking at the Pearl and going for a coffee and then walking along the trail there to the playground. And then, depending on how our day is going, I may enjoy the playground, the street, or I may go into the zoo and spend a little time there, ride the train, and then enjoy the shade of the beautiful park and the trails inside the park. And so, I feel like I'm just here to listen. I enjoy our park very much the way it is. And I know that there has been some feedback on wanting to maintain it just the way it is and perhaps do some existing sprucing up or perhaps adding amenities. But I know that I sure do enjoy the beautiful space that we have. And I hope that you all give your feedback and you give your opinions about it. And hopefully, we have feedback from all members of the community. So, as a young...as a mother with young children, I do appreciate being able to go in and out very quickly to somewhere because you never know when things might fall apart very quickly. And suddenly, in fact, I was there not too long. We fell at Brackenridge Park. And there was this single dad and he was there with his children. And I had to borrow a diaper. Well, not borrow, but I had to ask him, "Do you have any diapers?" Because I don't. I came from the Pearl. I left a diaper bag and I need one. And so, of course, he was kind enough to give me a diaper and some wipes. But we also know that we have very seniors people as well that may enjoy walking around the park because it's shaded. And so, it's one of the parks...one of the things that's lacking in some of our urban parks is up there, not enough shade. So, we do hope to hear from all of the members of our community, whether you are senior. And I know we have a group here from AARP. So, thank you, AARP, for advocating on behalf of seniors. And I'm sure there's some other parents of young children in the room who also need the flexibility to just come in and out of a park without too much commitment of staying very long. And then, of course, people who just love the area because it's where we've grown at and where we've spent all of our time. So, hopefully, some old users, old-time users, long-time users, I suppose is a better word. And then, some new people who are maybe experiencing it for the first time because of the revitalization of the area around the Pearl and the Mission River North project. So, thank you all very much for being here. I'll be here for most of the event. I will have to leave after a little while. But I'm anxious to hear everybody's feedback. So, thank you for organizing us and allowing us to be here in this beautiful theater. Thank you to the Guadalupe for having me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, real quick, before we start, I want to... And I'm looking to see if I see the consultants in the back. And I don't know if I... Oh, they're over here, okay. So, our consultants, we have two of them here today. They will be taking notes. We also have staff here. So, they will be recording what is being said. Not recording, but I mean, writing notes about what's being said. Everyone also has the opportunity to... The boards in the back give you the opportunity to place a dot on the different elements of the draft master plan that you either really like, kind of like, or neutral about, not crazy about, and really don't like. You're able to put that there. So, we're trying to get a consensus of what are some of the elements that people really feel strongly about or elements that they really feel strongly against. And so, everyone has that opportunity. We also have iPads in the back. So, if you don't feel comfortable either speaking or you don't want to... We also have comment cards you can put in the back. If you don't feel comfortable using comment cards, we have iPads that can, you know, walk you through a survey. They ask certain questions about the different elements. But we have also people working the different boards in the back. And so, if there's specific questions that you have, you know, you heard about this, you know, you thought about this, they can help you answer or they can help answer some of those questions that you may have. So, I just kind of want to give you the big picture. So, when we look at a master plan, a master plan really is a plan. It's kind of a guiding principle plan. It's not an implementation schedule. It's not a construction project. It's really a vision. It's how...where do we see Brackenridge Park going? And beyond that, in this particular case, there's no money or funding identified for anything in the master plan right now. So, there isn't any money to do any elements in the master plan. So, it would be very clear, while we may have a lot of visions and dreams and even if the public really wants to see some of those, today, as we speak, there is no money identified for any improvements or any changes in Brackenridge Park. The second piece I want to share too is that the master plan does not address any programming of the park. Meaning, it doesn't say, "We're gonna add this and add this program, that program." Doesn't talk about any fees. You know, there's been some rumors about charging people to go to Brackenridge or being able to camp out during Easter time. There's no mention in the master plan about fees whatsoever in, you know, utilizing or increasing fees. And there's really not really anything in the master plan that talks about changing use. There is elements in the master plan that talk about changing, some of taging streets and parking, which ultimately could have an impact on use. But there's nothing that comes out. For example, you know, I heard some...in another meeting, people say, "You're taking barbecue pits out of Brackenridge Park." Doesn't talk about taking barbecue pits out. Doesn't take about taking pigment tables out. Doesn't talk about any of that. So, it really is...the vision in Brackenridge Park master plan really talks about three main things. Talks about restore, preserve, and protect. It talks about restoring a lot of the ecological features of the park. It talks about preserving a lot of the historic and cultural features of the park and ultimately protecting those features and protecting park users in the park. So, in that big vision, the consultants came up with five strategy areas. And that's what we're asking for your input today on those strategy areas. So, just to kind of give you a background, those fall into, and I'm gonna read them verbatim because they're gonna be on your boards, so they'll be able to see that. It talks about increasing visibility and pedestrian access to and within the park. So, what that really talks about is how people view the park or get to the park. So, Brackenridge, unfortunately, is encumbered by a lot of physical barriers when you think about it. You have Avenue B, Cataupah Persia, which is the big drainage ditch that kind of separates it to one section. You have Hildebrand and Stadium Drive and Almose and they kind of block it from one other angle. Then, you kind of come from the south. You may have the St. Mary's Mulberry, you know, Five Points at one point at that section there, the Tres Way. So, one of the three recommendations is to really look at how do we address neighborhood connectivity and really a presence of the park. So, they like have a front door or when you're driving down Broadway that you feel like, "There's Brackenridge Park. I've arrived," or "It's a destination." So, one of the other strategies is recapturing green space in lieu of impervious cover and parking. So, what that talks about today, 20% of Brackenridge Park is covered with impervious cover. That could be a rooftop, could be a parking lot, could be a sidewalk, could be a building. 20% of it is hardscape. And so, one of the things they looked at is how do we recapture some of the green space within that park? So, there's strategies they looked at. Do we maybe narrow some roads? Do we take out some parking? Meaning that we need to replace it with parking in other places. So, there's strategies to look at. Does it make sense to maybe add garages at the outskirts of the park or the periphery of the park and then take out parking inside the middle of the park? So, that's one of the things, one of the strategies that's looked at to see, is there a way to recapture green space, add back more grass, add more trees to the park? The third strategy is restoring, preserving, and articulating park cultural and historic features. So, what that really talks about is Brackenridge has layers and layers of history to it. It has pre-Spanish colonial history, has Spanish colonial history, has history during the Confederate time in our history. It has a lot of history that's just layered on top of it. And so, one of the strategies is looking at how do we take some of those buildings? How do we take some of those features and interpret those and make sure that people understand the history of Brackenridge, which is ultimately the history of San Antonio? How do we look at telling our history as a community, as a people, as San Antonians, through Brackenridge Park? And part of it is looking at preserving those buildings, making sure they're not falling into disrepair. Are there other uses that we could find for those buildings? Meaning, they...it may have been a waterworks building at one point in its history. But today, maybe it's a conference room or maybe it's a coffee shop. But looking at ideas, how do we repurpose some of those structures within the park? The fourth one is restoring natural park features and improving and improving water quality. So, you think about Brackenridge. Sometimes, a lot of people forget it. It's around the San Antonio River. Brackenridge is there because of the river. And so, sometimes, we forget about the river and the river ends up being almost like second thought. And so, one of the things we talked about there is how do we restore some of the natural balance? We have a lot of invasive species throughout the Brackenridge Park that really kill out some of the native plants and native trees, which impair and cause erosion and then cause the water quality to diminish in Brackenridge Park, especially in the river through Brackenridge Park. We also look at Cataupah Persia, which I mentioned earlier, which is this huge drainage ditch, which is concrete line. So, one of the strategies they looked at is, do we look at an eco-restation project? Do we look at taking that concrete ditch and making it more like the Mission Ridge of the river? Where you add that plant and you add that trees, you bring back the fauna and the flora, you bring back animals and nature, but also make it accessible for people to use as a trail, as a connector. So, that's again, one of the strategies you'll see on the board. And then, the last one is reducing vehicular traffic to improve pedestrian mobility. So, this is probably has gotten the most conversation from people, which is what we want to hear, which is what we're talking about, not taking out the streets in Brackenridge because ultimately, believe it or not, the streets are a historic feature of Brackenridge. But looking at possibilities of either closing off segments of the streets, pieces of the streets, or closing them off during certain times of the year. So, there's a possibility that maybe they're closed but during the holidays, like during the spring break, during Easter, that those streets be open so that people can have loading and unloading. But really looking at trying to make Brackenridge more pedestrian and bicycle friendly as opposed to just having cars going through. And I think you'll see on some of the maps in the back, we have a big problem with cut-through. There is an access point from Hildebrand that people enter in the park through Hildebrand and cut and zoom down to get to Broadway so they can just circumvent our Incarnate Word, University of Incarnate Word and the Broadway Light. So, that's one of the things they looked at is maybe closing up one street or two streets might be a solution to see about trying to manage traffic within Brackenridge so that it is safe and friendly for families and kids who want to be walking around and running around and give them more opportunity to be able to do that. So, those are the...those are the five strategy areas that we're really looking at part of the draft master plan. So, like I mentioned, there's no planning yet associated with anything. Nothing's been finalized. We're doing input meetings across the city. We ultimately will go to council committee just to present recommendations. And those recommendations, the way I'm envisioning, will look twofold. One would be, of course, we have our consultants, which are subject matter experts in the area. I mean, you really think about, you know, landscape architects, architects. These are some individuals from some well-known firms in San Antonio. Actually, there's a team from five, I think, three different firms that are very well-known in San Antonio, maybe four. I'm trying to think of it off the top of my head. But one in San Antonio. So, they may have recommendations, but we will ultimately give council the full picture. My goal is to present council with, here's what, you know, kind of the consultants are kind of recommending, us also working with Brackenridge Park Conservancy, what they're kind of recommending, what staff recommends, and what the public is saying. And ultimately, hopefully, we'll have a great product that really addresses some of the visions that we want to see for Brackenridge, but also has the integrity and the desire of what the public is. Because at the end of the day, without the public will to see anything happen, we just won't see any...we won't see any improvements. We won't see any improvements or even sustainability of the park. And we think ultimately, that's what we want to see is that Brackenridge continue to be one of the crown jewels in our park system. So, like I mentioned, boards are in the back. I know people may be on a schedule. So, you're not required to stay to hear all the speakers. We will be having the speakers come up one at a time. They get three minutes if you're here as an individual. If you're representing a group, meaning there's three or more of you and you want to be heard as a group, we'll give you actually nine...nine...six to nine. Nine minutes for a group because we want to make sure you hear everything you have to say. We have to say, we have staff that are recording, are picking notes. But if your schedule doesn't allow you to stay, please, go back to the boards. We have staff already at the boards. We have cards, we have the iPads, we've been through the survey. So, we don't want you to have to feel like get to stay before, get to stay the whole two hours to be able to...your input to be heard. You can...and we want everyone, whether you speak or not, to please go put your dots. We want to see where the consensus is for some of the features that people like and some of the things that they don't like. And then, that helps us at the end of the day, report back to council and give them the overall report of what we, you know, see, we're hearing from the community. And we're also...this is also available online at our website, at thesantiano.gov, www.santiano.gov. If you go under Parks and Recreation. Even actually, on the city's main page, there's an access point that talks about the Brackenridge draft master plan. You can send your comment via email if you'd like. The copy of the master plan is actually there electronically if you'd like to read it and review it. So, again, there's lots of opportunity for you to give input tonight and the next...probably into the next month. We're probably gonna go another month. I think our meetings go into the early July. So, before we start with the speakers though, I wanted to recognize Lynn Bobbitt, Executive Director of the Brackenridge Park Conservancy, and see if she wanted to share a few words with you. And then, I'll come back and we'll start the meeting with the speakers. Thank you.
Hello. I'm the Executive Director of the Brackenridge Park Conservancy. And I thought it would be interesting for you to hear just about the conservancy and how it was formed. I also wanted to let you know that I live in District 1 and I use the park on a regular basis, not just because I'm the Executive Director of the Brackenridge Conservancy. I'm a San Antonian. I have lived here all my life. I had many birthday parties in the park. I even had an alligator from the Alligator Gardens. It has been an important part of my family's life too. The Brackenridge Park Conservancy was formed in 2008. And it was to be the steward of and advocate for Brackenridge Park. It was to be a partner with the city of San Antonio. And we indeed have a memorandum of understanding with the city of San Antonio. It was adopted by the city council in 2009. And the Parks and Recreation Department administered the memorandum of understanding. That memorandum allows us to be an advisor to the city to talk about the protection of the park as the city envisions it as well as the community. We are not an organization to tell the city what to do. We are here to be an advocate for the park itself and to actually represent you, the community. We have a website too, www.breckenridgepark.org. And you may go to our website. It is free. You find all kinds of information and galleries of photographs as well about the history of the park. The park is on the National Register of Historic Places. It is something, as Xavier referred to, in that... Just you can't walk in and change it without a lot of discussion. So, I too would like to say, this is an opportunity for all of us to come together. San Antonio is known as a collaborative city. And we've shown ourselves proud in that regard. So, this is the time to speak up about what you want for your park. It is a park for the entire city, not just one district or the other. And I also wanted to say that the Brackenridge Conservancy was formed as a result of a partnership with the city as well as the Conservation Society. The new Executive Director of the Society is here with us tonight to hear about the park. But it was thought that with the development that was going to occur and the explosive development that you see happening now, the city was very visionary. And they saw the need for an organization. It is the only organization that is solely dedicated to looking after the needs of the park. And when I talk about park, I mean, the whole Brackenridge Park is about 345 acres. But that includes the zoo, that includes the widdy, that includes the golf course, that includes the first tee. Only a third of that, or about 115 acres, is open and non-feed-based and free to the public. So, it's what we all need to look at and decide what we want for it. So, I welcome comment, input. And I'm here for the evening too, to answer questions. I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, we're gonna start with our first speakers.
Questions on your background? Do you want to take questions on the background?
On the...for the park? Yes, sir. So, at the different stations, they can get the specific details?
None of the master plan. Let me ask the question. You mentioned that you had met, that this thing started in 2015 and that you had met with community organizations and neighborhood organizations to get their feedback. Is there a place where we can...where we can look for that feedback? Did you document their feedback?
Yes, the consultants have that. So, they can see that.
There's a public at that. Can I?
Yes, you can see that, sir. The consultants can provide that to you, yes, sir. So, in the back, we'll have the consultants.
Is it on the San Antonio, the www... Website that you...
I'm not sure if that detail is in the draft that's on the website. But we can see...
Can you please provide it for us, please?
Sure, yes, sir.
Can you put it on the website?
Yes, sir. Okay. So, the first speaker is... And I apologize if I get the name wrong. Gianna Rendon? Okay. 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 Then Hunter Soski? And then, he will be followed by Mikey Moore.
Okay, so I'll keep my comments brief. I just have a couple. So, I am a student at Trinity University. Since I use Brackenridge all the time, it's super close. I really enjoy the park the way it is. My classmates and I will sometimes go over to study. We'll sit on the banks of the river right there in the park. We'll study this really nice break from everything else. Specifically, on the limiting the use of vehicles in the park and closing off some of the roadways. I see people use those facilities all the time, not just like certain parts of the year. Every time I'm at the park, I see people park there, you know, picnicking or bringing out their stuff to just have a nice day at the park. And I think we should like respect and accommodate that like historic and really unique use of the park and being able to be really accessible and really close to it. And secondly, for the people mover that's mentioned in the plan, to me, that is...it makes it seem reminiscent of like a theme park rather than a park park. And I think it just completely defeats the purpose of the park being kind of an estate and everything. And it makes it too much of a, like, you know, touristy destination type thing. It just doesn't make sense for the park.
Ms. Moore? And she will be followed by Jeanne Elder.
I'm Mikey Moore and I grew up in Brackenridge Park. I've had to ride a horse there and I'm 71. I go through there every day, every day. I walk two miles a day. I think that it would be a good idea if you're worried about all the asphalt and the impervious cover, to rip it up. Not limit any parking, but rip up the asphalt and use pavers or use porous concrete or use grass-covered streets where you mow the roads. Build a green grass roof at the train station instead of getting rid of that parking. As far as access is concerned, access to the neighborhoods, getting to get into the park, there's already plenty of access. And yet, you talk of restricting access by making everyone have to go into the park at Toledo, at the Toledo entrance. But then, you say you want the neighborhoods to have access and those are contradictory ideas. I don't think you should restrict the access into the park anywhere at all. Nor vehicles being allowed to go into the park. They should be allowed to continue to use it. You can fix the asphalt problem other ways than not letting any cars go in there. As far as parking concerned, there's already a lot of parking and it's all free. You have over a thousand... Thank you. You have over a thousand spaces, 300 of them in the shade under 281 on Toledo Drive, which by the way, was named after my sister. Thank you very much. And you have parking at the Sunken Gardens. You have parking at the train station. All of it's free already. If you're worried about impervious cover, then tear it up and put pervious concrete or pavers or grass. Put a cover over it and let it be concrete roof, and you plant it with grass. There's all kinds of ways of taking care of that problem. I'm curious, how much does a garage cost? I'm curious how much Pape Dawson is gonna profit on yet another garage in our park. So I agree with this gentleman on the third row. I'd like to know where the public can easily access the feedback that you guys are getting from everybody. Let us be transparent, let the people see what other people are saying. Originally, by the way, you said five or six parking garages. And now I'm reading in your thing like three or four parking garages. I think that's uncomfortable, I don't like it. Regarding the golf course, police comes up next year. They have butchered trees, they have polluted the river. They have polluted, they have caused erosion up and down the river. And if you go out there right now, and you'll see where they cut all the trees and all the brush along the waterways in the, in the golf course. And it's causing erosion along the riverbanks and that creek that runs from the Patau-Pa Pershing. Make them pay for it. Make them pay back for all the trees that they butchered or the trees that they lost. Or better yet, take back the golf course. Excuse me, I timed this before I did it, and I'm gonna finish. Instead of letting the rich businessmen play golf on the golf course, let the town people who are paying their taxes use the golf course. Or take it back and use it back into a park. So I guess my last thing I would say is you already have a great lawn, grand lawn. You have the golf course, you have the driving range. You have plenty of grand lawns, use the ones you already have. And the last thing I will say is, I have been driving through that park, meditating in that park, and enjoying that park in my car for 71 years of my life, or a car. And if you take away my access to my city park, or these people's access to their city park, you're going to open a can of whoop-ass. Thank you.
Jean Eldor? Followed by Jess Mays.
Yes, hi, I'm Jean Eldor. I live on River Road. And I've lived in the River Road area since the 70s. And I do observe the park in many times through the years. And I'm concerned about the talk of limiting the street access to the park. I've been told that that's not gonna happen. But at the same time, you talk about that you are going to block off the streets. And I'd like to point out that on Mulberry, between Broadway and St. Mary's Street, there is no way to get off of Mulberry if there's a traffic jam, which happens regularly when people come to the Sunken Garden or an event in the park. Or just during the weekday, if something happened, not to be able to leave Mulberry Street and maybe possibly use the park to, you know, as an exit. Is the problem also by blocking off the streets, as you're thinking about, you limit the ability for emergency vehicles to get into the park in case you have, you know, the police or an ambulance needing to get into there. But actually, the thing that I would like to bring up at this time, since I already brought this up in today's paper, these people movers, and we have not gotten any figures on how much they cost. And are these, the pictures that you have here, is this what's proposed to be bought? And of course, meaning that if you're buying these, you're probably wanting to build your parking garages outside the, outside the park and move, and use these to move these into the park, is what I'm thinking you're proposing? But I would like to, I think we should have some figures on how much these buses or people movers are costing, and how much they are to maintain, and the salaries of the drivers, and insurance and stuff. And is this cheaper actually than just enjoying the park the old-fashioned way and just park your car?
Thank you. I have, I'll go ahead with the next question. And then after, I don't know why your name's giving one, is Christopher Green after this.
Hi, I'm Jess Mays. My family actually has been in the Manque Park area, which is about, our house is about three blocks from there. And we actually helped build a lot of the houses in that neighborhood. So we've been around there about a hundred years. I used to break horses in, in the park. So I grew up there, my mom grew up there, grandparents, everybody. I'm kinda just gonna go off the top, I don't have a set speech or anything. But I really think it's important that we take a look at who we're displacing in this. Because my whole neighborhood, Manque Park, has felt the squeeze. I have watched primarily Mexicano families have to move out and have to force to move somewhere else because they can't afford their taxes. I've watched skyscrapers go in where fun places used to be. And I wonder if this Brackenridge Park revitalization is just some architectural firm or a collaboration between architectural firms to make money? Because sometimes the people don't get heard in this. I hear things like people movers, and it's just like, so what is this Disneyland? This is a park for all of us to enjoy, you know? And there's examples all over the country and in other countries of parks where the people can enjoy them, and parks where they're set for the upper class, the rich class. This park's for everyone, and I think that everyone should be heard, and really be heard. And I think what he mentioned was important, too. Where are these documents? I think we should be able to see what the public feedback is, because it's important. Thank you.
My main concern, I think I'll limit it to simply the parking garages. The greatest travesty that has ever been imposed upon Brackenridge Park was the construction of a parking garage in the woodlands. That is just an eyesore and a wart that will need to be extracted at some point. It's got to be taken out. Now, I've heard rumors that certain entities wish to build up the other stories. I've heard rumors that the old maintenance facility was, was promised, when that garage was built, that that maintenance facility proper fee was then gonna be wooded and restored to natural habitat. It is not. Now I'm understanding it's gonna be used for buses. Now, I don't mind parking garages, but not one square inch of the park should have a parking garage. They should all be to the periphery outside of the property. So Incarnate Word needs a garage, right? If the zoo needs one, outside the owned property, build one. If the widdy needs a parking garage, go across Broadway, buy some property and build one. Not one square inch of the park should be the parking garage. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Gloria Demitas, and then followed by Amy Cas...
Casely.
Casely, sorry.
Hi, I've been an educator here in San Antonio for about 30 years. Have taken many, many children to the Brackenridge Park. And also enjoyed it myself. When my family from Austin would come, all the way from Austin to Brackenridge Park. One of the main things that I like about Brackenridge Park is that it's a bucolic setting. It is wooded. The children would always pretend they were in the woods when they would take the train. And I, as a child, remember my father driving us through the streets that were gravel paths. And just being in wonder that there were picnic tables there. So I wouldn't wanna see those roads closed to access because our children in the inner city don't have access to that type of setting, a bucolic setting. Another thing that I'd like to address is this idea of a grand lawn. Grand lawns go back in history to about the 17th, 16th century in Europe. We keep trying to make this city in the image of a European country. We're not Europe, we're actually Mexican. And there are so many positive things about being Mexican that this city seems to want to be erased. Why not La Gran Lanza or El Gran Paco? You know? Why not make it more relevant to this community? Lastly, it's not a neighborhood park. It's a community park, the entire community of San Antonio and beyond. Because as I said, as a child, having grown up in Austin, we would leave Austin to come to Brackenridge Park. So I hope you do some changes, but minimize them to keep that bucolic feeling. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Amy Casely. I just have a few comments I wanted to make. Following up in part on the, on the gentleman's comment about the squeeze on the neighborhood. And we know, and the city has not, has not hidden the downtown plan, but we know that the effect of that is and will be the gentrification of the downtown. In other words, the replacement of our traditional neighborhoods with more affluent, more white, more highly-paid residents. And, and this issue with, with Brackenridge Park is another part of it. If we improved the south reach of the river and mission trails happened, because now that property is so valuable because of the improvements of the money that the city and the county put into it, it's just incredible, it's incredible to believe that the city is proposing to make improvements to Brackenridge Park, a large part of which will be to keep out anybody that can't walk to the park. Isn't that just incredible? Instead, right? Instead, what the city should be doing is making it more accessible to people who are coming from the west side or the east side or the south side. Because those people are gonna have to live farther away. I'm fine if we have a parking problem to say this part, these parking facilities are available only to people who have more than one, only to cars that have more than one person in. What about that? What about parking for families? What about parking for more than one person, right? What about parking that isn't designed for the wealthy people who are moving into these neighborhoods?
Secondly, I'm gonna be a little bit selfish here. My wife has to use the walker most of the time. And this parking garage, if I ask though, and having to ride a tram to wherever we wanna go to be dropped off in the park, just won't get it. She, she has to really struggle with that thing. And I have to help her, of course. She's 79, I'm 80. We're not gonna be using it much longer. But I have used it, we have used it since 1958. And she used it before then. But I came in from Alabama, and I thought it was the greatest park I'd ever seen. However, it seems to me that there's something else afoot here. And, and I just hope it's not true. And that's this parking garage. I don't know how much the land would cost to develop a parking garage, don't it? I don't know how much it would cost to develop the parking garage. But it seems to me that the only ones who will benefit from this parking garage is the landowners and the contractors. So I really hope you step back, think about this, and use the money that it would take to develop the parking garage and to buy the land to put it on. And use that to get rid of the invasive plants. You people should have been doing that all along anyhow. It's a rather beautiful park, just it drives. It, it brings about a calming effect. Now, I played ball on the diamonds there back when I was a young man. And I, I don't know where you're, what you're gonna do with those. I don't know what you're gonna do with the Joskie Pavilion, the Cola Pavilion. What about the people on the west side and the south side and the east side that wanna have a picnic at one of those things, and they can't go in there and park? What about the people on those, in those areas of town who are struggling to make it and wanna have a day at the park? And they get out there and they have to pay the parking, and you know they're gonna have to pay. Then more than likely, that tram's gonna cost also. But I just, I just hope you rethink this thing. And I'll leave you with one thought. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I want to address process. Number one, I don't know who these comments are going to be taken to. Usually, there's a board, there's a committee, there's a city council. And we come and we give our information to them. And then it goes for something. Where are, is somebody taking, you said notes. Is it being recorded? And how is all this going to get to our city council members, who eventually will be making a decision? That's a very big question I have. Number two, this process was started in a vacuum, I believe. On line 11 of the master plan that's on, online, it states that that, this master plan was developed after listening to stakeholders. Well, the community, the larger community did not even know about it. So I don't know who the stakeholders are. I understand that some of them are the neighbors, Incarnate Word. Who am I talking to? Am I talking to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Incarnate Word, San Antonio Independent School District. I think the people that, of River Road are certainly neighbors, people in Terrell Hills, people in other areas. And I respect that they live very close. But as has been said already, this is a community park. It belongs to everybody. And since I found out that we were going to be having these hearings, I've been going to the park myself. I go on Sunday afternoons, sometimes during the week. There's always people there. I made a copy of the, of the tram, of the road of the tram. So I tell people that one of the things that's gonna happen is that there probably will be parking garages, and there's gonna be a trenecito, you know, little train, to take them inside. And right away, they say, well, how are we supposed to have our picnics here? You know, we come on Easter, we come during the week, we come for our piñatas. It's almost a tradition. I saw this lady, she says every child and their family, for their first birthday, they have a piñata in Brackenridge Park. And to me, the users, all the users of the park should have been taken into consideration. You mentioned the five strategies, and they're fine. But nowhere does it say who, who the users are. Usually, you investigate who goes there, who uses it, and do you wanna keep them there? Because very frankly, when I tell people what's happening, summarize what I know to be the plan, what they tell me, many of them, nos están echando, señora. They're kicking us out. They don't want us to do this anymore. And this is coming from people. I've seen senior citizens, they are on Sunday walking their, their pets. I've seen large families having their picnics on Sundays, on even after, after work in the evening. And I think that I'm worried that we schedule these public hearings, and they're going to go for naught. That the plans will continue? Because it's, it's not set in stone, as I hear. And when something is not set in stone, it's, it can be changed. I hope that you go back to the drawing order. And that you postpone the presentation to the city council. Because I don't know what process you're going to use to change things, being that you've heard all these things at the hearing. I'm very concerned that we hang, we're going to share information, and that it's not going to go anywhere. So I'm asking you, Ms. Olivia, to please take that message to, to the people.
Can we hear his answer, though? Can we hear your answer?
Well, I'll restate what I said earlier, that we were grabbing all the information. And what we would present to council would be everything that we heard. So consensus from, sort of, for example, when we go to report to the council committee, we would, if, if the plan, when the, the consultants, for example, that city consultants feel strongly, and they say they recommend this professionally, then I, as the parks director, would come back and tell council, this is what the consultants are saying, but this is what the community's saying. So it's not in a vacuum. It's, we would present that to a council committee. And the council committee see, within, within directives, we need you to go back, incorporate more, or to change this or not change that. So all that would happen before anything's ever even adopted. And then much less ever funded or implemented. Because there's a whole other process for implementation. When people talk about which company, what color, that's like a project. So, you know, when we have our bond programs, we have community meetings, you know, what do you wanna see, what color, what do you want it to feel like? We're not even talking about that. That's a whole nother layer once something is actually funded. So this is purely just a plan, a vision statement, a vision document. And then that's what we would present to council, is we would, we're gonna compile all the information for all the meetings and share that with them.
Okay, so my answer, my answer is that the consultants that were hired do not have to listen to what the people said?
I, I, I cannot say that they have to. I mean, again, I think what we're looking at is the consultants are making their, their professional recommendations. But again, we, we have an opportunity, staff will weigh in, and then we will provide the information for the public as well.
So you're, you're taking the information to them?
Yes, ma'am. To, we're sharing it with the consultants, and we're taking it to council, the council committee. And then that could get...
Are we gonna get a copy?
So I can...
Summarize?
So that would be available, because when we present to council, all that information's available to the public. So you'll be able to see that. And we can answer, I don't wanna, you know, interrupt everyone else's time. I can answer more detailed questions. But we're nowhere close for anything being anywhere completed.
The consultants are here also?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. I mentioned them right in the very beginning, just in over here.
Can you introduce them?
Sure, we have Jim Gray, who's the principal. And then we have, I'm sorry, my mind's a blank.
I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Maria, that we worked together in 2002. Yeah, too. I know a lot about the park, too. And, and a very sympathetic woman here tonight. I want to know that, that we're listening. One of the hallmarks of our firm's reputation is that we listen. And we're gonna do the right thing, we're speaking. Which firm is it? My, my firm name, firm's name is Realto Studio. My office, my office is at 24, my office is at 23...
Is it in the back of the room?
No, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. My, my office is at 2425 Broadway. You recognize that address? address, if it's clear? Um, right in front of the Brackenridge Golf Course. Your name, one of us? My name is Jim Gray, G-R-A-Y, telephone number two-two-six, no, I'm sorry, eight-two-eight, one-one-five-five, we'll head to you from-
Who, who are all the other consultants, you said consultants?
I'd like to just take you back very quickly to the process. I attended the first meeting at the Botanical Gardens where we got the, the information, where we received the information from Paige Dawson and Almo Architects, as well as, as our facilitator. And it sounded to all of us that were there that it was a Dundeeo. So then, after that, uh, Marina de Neta, Berio Saba, put the editorial in the paper, there was a special, uh, edition of La Voz that went out to the community, giving information on all of this. And the thing is, you know, uh, first of all, it, it just rankled me because it, it had all of the smackings of, of patronismo, and again, to remind people what patronismo is, because we grew up with it, is to have people say, we know what's best for you. You don't decide, we know what's best for you. And, and this is what the idea was at the time that I received. Now, talking about the grand lawn, you know, uh, and it was explained at the meeting at the Botanical Gardens that it would be open for venues and concerts and things, we have that already, at the Sunken Garden Theater. It just needs to be reconfigured, it needs to be redone, but we've got that already. We're in South Texas, we don't need gran lawns. We need trees. People will go and gravitate towards trees, under la resolana, or the shades of trees, but that's what we need, more trees. In addition to, to the trees, one of the things that we need in the park itself, in the woodland areas, are you aware of all of the trees that are dying? We need to have a serious infill project of the trees in all of these wooded areas, because they're all dying. Also, uh, you mentioned that presentations were made to neighborhood associations, well, I'm the current chair of the River Road Neighborhood Association. We didn't have this presentation, and this is our backyard. We, we see Brackenridge Park as our backyard, we're in and out of there all the time, and it's not, as was stated in the last meeting, um, it's used as a shortcut, no, we're in and out of the park all the time because we enjoy the park.